For Thursday, August thirteenth. Can we have roll call?
Don McBride.
Here.
Jill Oxtontz, absent. Joe Chappell, absent. Abe Gassimpor.
Yes.
And Chris Bryant.
Here.
So we do have a quorum. We have three.
All right. Are there any general public comments regarding any issue that is not listed on our agenda tonight? Okay, we will move on to our next item, which is approval of previous minutes from the July ninth, twenty twenty regular meeting, and the July fifteenth, twenty twenty special meeting.
Make a motion for approval.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Don McBride.
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor.
Yes.
And Chris Bryant.
Yes.
All right.
Do we approve those together or separately?
I'm fine with them together. Yeah, because if there was an issue with one or the other, we'd do it separate, but we're fine.
All right.
Oh, we got Joe in. Okay.
Our next item is PC application two zero dash zero zero eight. Discussion and potential action on a request for a special use permit to allow for a church office, Church on the Hill, that will include offices for pastoral staff and all administrative operations of the church in a building located at two ten West Oklahoma Avenue. Can we have our staff report?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you probably saw on the agenda, these two are fairly related in that, but they're on separate applications because, take this off so you can hear me, they're on separate applications due to obviously being on separate properties or locations. But the first one is, it's just up the street here at two ten West Oklahoma, and it's for a special use permit for a church office. The code requires in the central business district, a church or church use to be a special use permit. It's not an outright permitted use, and thus, that's why we're here. The applicant did submit a floor plan that was outlined or in your staff report. There wasn't a whole lot of information beyond the floor plan, and other than it was going to be an office for the use of the church. The church location is not in the downtown area. The primary church is, I believe, about three miles north of where Love's is and that, but the applicant can probably fill you in a little bit better on that. But anyway, this is the office for their main church, and as I indicated, it did not say any other, I guess, uses or what beyond an office. A couple of things I want to just go over in that from a land use perspective that will somewhat apply to this, but especially apply to the next one. Our zoning code, like most zoning codes, really don't define church or, you know, and that in terms of explaining what really is a church use versus a non-church use versus owned by a church versus sponsored by a church, anything like that. One of the things that you keep in mind is that when you're dealing with the zoning code, and there could potentially be different uses on a particular property, you usually, if you want to say, permit by the most restrictive use. So in some cases, in this case, maybe if they're, you know, saying, well, twenty-five percent of our building is going to be for church use, the other seventy-five percent is X. You still need a special use permit because it does have activities that require a special use permit. So again, whether it's a hundred percent, a slight percent, or whatever, but keep that in mind. Generally, a church use or church activity uses are usually not allowed in a downtown area. And from a land use perspective, the reason why is, in a downtown, you're looking to create a, what a lot refer to as a vibrant or twenty-four seven type atmosphere, where you have a mix of uses such as restaurant, you have your retail, you maybe even have your residential. You have a number of things to where during the day you have uses, and even at night, you have other activities and uses. Theater, you know, there's a whole realm of stuff. And so most of the downtowns, unfortunately, a church use is not the best land use in that situation. So again, a lot of codes don't even allow it, period. Ours, obviously, is a special use permit. But again, from a purely land use, has nothing to do with the church, has nothing to do with the people, from purely a land use perspective, that's one of the things that you look at for a downtown area. Now, the other thing I just want to add, and this is applicable to this one or the next one, one of the other issues that you run into is when you have a central business district that is a small, if you want to say confined or determined area, it's hard to say, we're only going to allow this use once and never again in that. It's hard to say, okay, we're going to approve this special use permit for this use, but if somebody else wants to come in, say no, because we only want one. That leads to a lot of legal issues, and, you know, if you allow it in one regard, you essentially have to allow it in all, because the district is so small and confined, it doesn't have that diversity. In a lot of cities, you may see even a church use where it's within a commercial, or it's a special use permit in a commercial area. So if you're in one part of town, it may be more than appropriate, and in another part of town, it's not. Again, when you get to a central business district like this, it's hard to make that determination or have that diversity because it's such a small, unique area of our community. So with all that, I'll just, like I said, that's kind of the land use part of it, the land use implications. Obviously, we're here tonight because there's a public element that goes along with this and that, so I'll just stop with that part of it. And if the commission has any questions of me, if not, we can move forth with the applicant, and then obviously, there's people here to speak.
All right. First off, does the commission have any questions of the applicant related to this agenda item, which is the office? And if the applicant's here, would you like to, would you like to speak about the office location? Yes? And if you would state your name and address for the record, and you can take off your mask while you speak.
Good. I'm Richard Hoag. I live at eleven oh eight Oak Tree Drive in Edmund Oak Tree. And I'm the senior pastor of Church on the Hill. Our desire to use the building at two ten is solely, honestly, as an office. We first were considering what we would do with the church. We were actually building the church out, he's right, out north of the city. And I told the guys that we were talking with initially, I said, you can't have people going three miles, four miles out in the country to do the weekday things. So people, when people come for counseling, when people come for whatever, if you're going to have a small prayer group, or if you're going to, they're not going to drive four miles. So I said, look, we need someplace in the city where we can meet, as well as having a place out of the city. So when our major donor found this facility, he asked me to come and look at it, and he said, would this do? I said, God, this is unbelievable. It's beautiful. It's fantastic. I understand it was a legal office before we were trying to operate it. So I think as far as people being in and out twenty-four hours a day, I think we'll probably have more people coming in than a law office would normally have. We don't see this as a meeting place, although that doesn't mean we might not have. For the other day, we had twelve pastors come at one moment, and we all sat around a conference table for a few minutes and talked about what was going on in the city and how excited they were, and how excited we were to know them. So it's like any church. I mean, if you went to First Baptist or First Methodist, you'd see the same thing. The church, the office, you know, even though it might be contiguous with the rest of the building, it has special uses. You don't have the auditorium and the office, nor will we have. So when we get through, we do plan, hopefully someday, to be able to build out the other end of it. And what it'll primarily be will be pastoral offices, where our guys will come, we'll be there during the day, we'll do our work there, we'll write there, we'll do the things which you do in a pastoral office.
All right. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this agenda item related to the office, the office use? Yes, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Elaine Seinen. I'm sixteen twenty-five Cedar Valley Manor in Guthrie. My husband and I own the Oklahoma building on the corner of Oklahoma and Division. I've checked into this, and when we first moved here, we tried to put an establishment in the basement of our building and wanted to obtain a liquor license so we could have a small bar. We were denied that liquor license because we were within three hundred feet of what was then church, church offices where church just had a storefront, whether they had church or not. The ABLE Commission came out and went from the corner of our property to the corner of the other property, and it was over three hundred feet, and we were denied the license. At that time, we decided to get together, petition in town, to put in an ordinance to limit churches in the downtown historic district that had to get approval of every business owner and building owner within three hundred feet to put anything in. And, you know, as churches, I'm all for churches, but in the downtown districts, they do not have revenue for the city. They also limit the rentals that we can do in our buildings because whether it wants a liquor license or not, the other businesses coming in will not like to have a business next door to a church of which there's limited access, limited people coming in and out. They want to be with other retail businesses. Now, I did check with the ABLE Commission, and I went through the fact that we have an office and also the youth center, because this applies to both. And I told them that one is strictly a church office and one is going to be a youth center. But what they said was, they considered both of those as church properties and would impose the three hundred feet limit for any other business coming in.
Who told you that?
The ABLE Commission. I contacted the ABLE Commission. I got her name if you want it. And I tried to contact the O M M A regarding any cannabis businesses also. They were unable to get back to me in time. But I do think it definitely limits, as building owners, I own a, my sister and her husband own one, my cousin owns a building downtown, all of us, it impacts our business to owning a building.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, if you would like to respond, yeah.
Yeah. For thirty years, I was pastor of City Church in downtown Oklahoma City. And we faced the very same thing. Even though we were in a historic building, which was a church, it had been surrounded by a number of bars. Some of them were nicer, some of them were worse. But what we did, we simply signed off on any liquor restriction, which would be on our side. And in fact, one of the bars, which was an old, dilapidated place, when they went out of business, they actually sold us their liquor license, which we were happy to get. So we bought that liquor license. Now today, if you go to City Church, which is today called Frontline, one of our young men took it, and men took it, and it's still pastoring there. Across the street is a vibrant business owned by Interurban. Down the road is another restaurant. Diagonally across the street is another restaurant. Around the corner, several restaurants, there's probably more liquor sold around Tenth and Robinson than about any other corner in Oklahoma City. So I think it's an absolute misnomer to think that somehow, just because a church office is there, that somehow we're going to limit. I think you could do, of course, we're concerned, you could put a bar next door. It's not going to bother us a bit. I think also, I mean, I don't know what your experience is with churches, but we have found that our church, when we went into Tenth Street, no one was on Tenth Street. No one wanted to be on Tenth Street. It was like a ghost town. And because our people are there, we grew to about two thousand members. We were very, very active. We had all sorts of conferences and concerts and all of these sort of things going on. And even church folks, when they get through going to concert, usually go out to eat someplace. So the restaurants around us thrived. In fact, the guys who owned Interurban were members of our church for a long time. So I think, don't think of the church as just some little dead space that somehow is going to make everything around it go bad. When I started Metro Church, I started Metro Church in nineteen seventy-five. We were the first thing east of I thirty-five in Edmund. In fact, we had to bore I thirty-five to take sewer and water and everything else over to our facility. We owned sixty acres there. It's now Life Church. Well, if you drop up into I thirty-five, you know that that corner, which there was nothing on that corner when I went there in nineteen seventy-five. Today, it's, you know, the central corner in Edmund, Oklahoma. So a church, if it's done correctly, can be a center of activity, a center of people coming. We will bring a lot of people to this town, who are both members, who live in Guyman, and who live around Guyman, who live totally outside of Guyman, because that's what, that's how we see our church functioning. So our church will be full of activity, it'll be full of people, it'll be full of attracting people to come in. So if I were a restaurateur, I would be excited about having a church that's going to attract that type of activity constantly in our city. And if I were a restaurateur, I'm not, but if I were, I'd try to build one as close to the dad gun church as I could get, so folks would come to my place first before they walk someplace else. So I don't think this is really a problem. It's certainly a problem we can solve, if that's the only problem, if that's all you're concerned about. That's an easily dealt with problem from our side.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
The question that I have, Dan, is that three hundred feet restrictions, even this is the office, it still applies?
Again, it's up, as Elaine had commented, it's going to be to the ABLE Commission's determination. That's not anything that has to do with our zoning or what. Every jurisdiction or every entity that has regulations will interpret them differently. I will say that there, you know, are times in which, as Elaine had stated, that it could very well be interpreted that way, that if there's a church that's sponsoring it or what and that, that it would apply. So it is definitely a consideration. And as Mr. Hoag had talked, I don't know if there's an availability of some type of exception release or that that could be signed that would keep the ABLE Commission happy and then have not, would not have any impact. I do not know. That's something that obviously we could look into, you know, further, but at this point, I don't know. And again, I don't know how the ABLE Commission is going to interpret what, you know, constitutes a church or use, because if you look at even the ABLE Commission regulations, it doesn't have a definition of church or religion. All it says is schools and religious activities. So it does appear that it would go beyond simply a church use, that anything that would quantify as a religious activity would fall under that three hundred foot requirement.
Well, I don't see how we can make a decision until we know the answer to that question.
I think you can more than make a decision, because that's one small aspect of the overall thing. As I indicated, from a land use perspective, I think there's other issues that lend to it rather than whether or not a business can sell liquor or not based on a church. If that's the case that we're looking at, you know, there's a lot of other determinations that we should probably make in the downtown that go well beyond that. So I think that if it-
If it's offices, and that's all it is, and ABLE signs off of that, I personally wouldn't have a problem with offices being there, but I don't know the answer to that, whether ABLE is going to look at them as a church or offices.
And I mean, I guess the thing would be is then say that there appears to be religious activities, which then, you know, if you feel is going to have issue, then deny the permit.
How was, how were these two locations identified or flagged by the city of Guthrie?
Because-
Given that the ownership, the church doesn't own-
Because there was going to be religious activities at, potentially at both locations. You know, ultimately, I guess if the commission and even the city council were to determine in this particular location that there are no religious activities whatsoever, and it's going to be strictly a office use with nothing else, then you're probably right. Special use permit wouldn't be required. It's an office use. But we did not-
What if the ABLE Commission sees it differently?
They may. But like I said, that's always going to be an issue with anything. I mean, you know, through our local zoning code, we see things differently. In fact, like today, you know, I had a call from a person who was saying, my property's agriculture. And I'm like, no, it's own commercial. And they're like, well, the county said it's ag. I'm like, no, your use may be that it's ag for assessment purposes and tax purposes, but from zoning purposes, it's completely different. This is a similar situation where we have a zoning code, and we have certain uses and stuff. There could be another agency that interprets it differently in that, but I don't know, you know. I guess I'm not always familiar with dependent on another agency's determination for us to make a determination when it comes to land use. It's either going to be a good land use or a bad land use, so to speak, overall.
My two cents on the land use is that I don't see downtown Guthrie as primarily an entertainment district only. I think it's a real mixed-use neighborhood. The post office doesn't pay taxes, banks don't pay taxes, general office use doesn't, I mean, sales taxes. General office use does not pay sales tax often, but it does contribute to, the tax base contributes to the quality of life. And I think there are a lot of qualitative benefits of having a church in an urban area and benefits of a youth center in a walkable part of town. But I would not want that to adversely affect other businesses and their potential. I think the ABLE Commission's rules are silly, and I think exclusionary zoning and trying to regulate what goes on inside a private property is ridiculous. And I think that they can coexist. You have other cities, well, in Oklahoma City, for example, you have a lot of churches, you know, they serve alcohol every Sunday during communion. Some churches meet in bars. I don't, the exclusionary zoning seems very restrictive and very non-conducive to a real thriving neighborhood. So from land use, I'm not persuaded that way, but I would not want to affect other businesses downtown if that is solely the determination of the ABLE Commission. And I don't know how Oklahoma City has been able to get around that. It sounds like they have been able to. Community Church and Tower Theater is another example. But I'll leave it at that. Any other comments from the commission?
I just can't approve it until we know what the ABLE Commission's going to do.
Can I make a comment as well?
Sure. Name and address for the record.
John Riddle, six oh nine North Hogan in Guthrieum and the first golf course.
We have a nice event that got nixed this year because of the COVID, the Red Brick Nights. And I really saw that bringing a lot of nice business to the downtown once a month. It was a really great summer festival night, you know. And I don't know how this is going to affect, because that location of the youth center is right on this very same block as where they've been having the Red Brick Nights. Is that going to affect the fact that they can no longer sell beer and wine and that? Is that going to stop Red Brick Nights in the future once the COVID is listed? That's the question I have. I don't know how that affects from this other commission that regulates the zoning. That's a good question. Another thing is that, being a commercial property owner myself, that I rent to businesses in downtown, I don't want to have them get restricted on what they can do and then lose renters over zoning stuff. I'd like to have it open and free where they could come in, and if they wanted to have, let's say, a restaurant that could also sell beer and wine or something like that. That would be tough if, like, I'm going to now lose a lot of money. I mean, our little downtown is starting to grow a little bit, and I'd like to see that to keep going. And I just hate to see this restrictions hamper that. I wish you guys would really check into this and find out what's really the deal here with this ABLE Commission or whatever it is, because it's not making anything very ABLE.
Thank you. Certainly, if it's the wish of the commission to use what power we have to say, no, we don't want churches in the downtown area for land use reasons, we can certainly entertain that. But do we have a motion about this?
I would like to see what the ABLE Commission has to say about it, because I don't think it hurts to have an office building downtown. If it is church-related, you're not holding services there. From what I've always seen, if you have an existing liquor license and a church goes in across the street, it doesn't affect the liquor licenses there.
Yeah, but it's the future ones that-
But it's the future you got to worry about and look at. I'm sure it wouldn't affect what's already in downtown.
So what if the ABLE Commission does not want to give an opinion or determination, then what are you going to do?
Well, then we have to proceed with what we know.
But we can't proceed with what we know now? Okay.
Well, my point is, if the ABLE says that an office for the church is not something that they would enforce as far as the three hundred foot thing, I wouldn't have a problem with that, considering the number of empty buildings in downtown.
Right. So it's alcohol use, not a land use we're concerned about?
Well, it's protecting the people downtown that has alcohol licenses already, but, I mean-
I'm just making sure I understand, so when-
Well, we do have a lot of activity in downtown. I mean, our downtown is a tourist town. That's what we just pretty much have. The, come in, we got eighty-niners, we got several festivals here during the year. They sell beers. They, now we've got dispensaries now, they are restricted from the church or something. So I think we need to have, if it's an office use, and we have some kind of letter or something, that it is not restricted.
Well, we have the deal in the bottom every year, and they're selling alcohol everywhere down there with the church right there headed.
We can deny it, and they could appeal.
I don't think anyone's interested in hampering any of our festivals and our culture downtown.
We could deny it, and they could appeal if they got ABLE to sign on.
Well, yeah, just so everybody understands, it's a special use permit, so it goes to the city council regardless. The planning commission's a recommendation body, so whether you recommend approval tonight or denial or whatever, obviously, if you table it, then we've added more timeframe to the whole process. But again, whatever decision if you make is a recommendation. And I guess to some regard, if we want to keep the process moving, you could, you could, if you're looking at the angle of wanting to approve it based on the fact that it wouldn't affect alcohol sales in the downtown, you can look at a recommendation for approval with the condition that the ABLE Commission would look at it as a a use that would not affect alcohol sales, licenses, whatever, in the downtown, and have that as your recommendation. In the interim, before it would go to the city council, staff could try to do whatever they could to get some determination from the ABLE Commission, and then at the city council, they would have all of that information.
ABLE Commission has too much control.
I mean, I just think about Frontline Church now. There's Packards and the garage across, right across the street.
Yeah.
They both have bars.
And they went in after we were there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. How did that happen?
So I said, I don't know. It's not our regulation.
And, you know, you don't-
We signed a waiver.
Right.
We said, we don't care. We don't count.
I'm interested in the waiver.
You think that would count with the ABLE Commission?
It did count with the ABLE Commission.
With them?
I'm interested in that.
That's how we got it done. We had, see, Pat's Bar-
If you could go up to the voting booth.
Sorry, sorry.
Pat's Bar was on Tenth Street, just one half of, fourth of a block down east of us, west of us. So it was already there when we took over that building. The church had been vacated for many, many years. John Norman, the lawyer, you may know John.
I know John.
He owned it. And so that was one of the problems we had to deal with, was Pat's Bar. Why do we do Pat's Bar? So we said to the commission, we said, look, we will sign a waiver. It's not going to bother us for Pat's Bar to be there. And there were times we almost wished you wouldn't have signed it. It was a pretty rough place. Like, one night, we came out, and there was, there was some guy had been killed at Pat's Bar and stuffed in one of our buses. But anyway, you never knew exactly what was going to happen. But that's the way church ought to be, I think, I'm in the middle of it. So then when the downtown began to boom, then guys began to buy the buildings on Tenth Street, some of those old vacant automobile buildings. And all those buildings today are filled with wonderful restaurants. I mean, Packards, I don't know whether you've been to Packards or not, but that, it was a terrible old dump. And today, it's one of the neatest restaurants in Oklahoma City. So we're all for the city. We don't want to be a hindrance to any, we believe in Guthrie. We want to be a part of this place. If you're going to do a festival, we want to do it with you. We may not be selling beer, but we'll do something that'll be fun and be a part of it with you, you know? So please don't see us as a hindrance. We're not a hindrance. We're a player. We want to be very involved in the city with everything we possibly can, and hopefully help to fill up the buildings that are empty. Just a side note, every time I drive downtown, which I do every day, I always pray for all those empty buildings. I pray the Lord will fill them up, bring great folks in here with wonderful, thriving businesses, and this place will kick and go again, just like what happened at Tenth Street. That'll come alive again.
Thank you. Yeah, and you don't want to go to the garage on Sunday after Frontline lets out, because the line will be out the door.
It'll get out.
But I, I wish that they could coexist, uh, and if there's a possibility to have a waiver, I would be, I'd be willing to look into that.
Is there anyone else here who's, you know, we have this petition with over thirty-nine signatures.
Yeah, and, and I was gonna say that, that one honestly probably came in more for the next one, uh, because that was the one that was, I think, the bigger concern maybe, uh, in that I know most of the, the petition and most of the comments I got were for the next one. Not that it doesn't pertain to this, but that's why I didn't mention it.
Sort of the same concern.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's similar concerns, yeah.
And if, if it is true that the ABEL Commission would consider both applications to be...
Yes, ma'am.
But can we table this and just still be given a letter?
Okay, some of the stuff that you're discussing, I discussed with ABEL. Um, I told them that the church was an office. I told them that the youth center was a youth center, not a church, but sponsored by the church, et cetera. I asked them if they had prayers and prayer meetings or Bible studies and everything. And their comment back was that based on the email, it sounds like a church property, me and the three hundred foot would apply to any new applicants coming in. That being said, the churches have explicit authority to waive the three hundred foot rule, not schools. My only concern with that is this gentleman is obviously willing to do that waiver. What if another church comes in and they are not willing to do the waiver? And, and then we have a problem again.
They won't get approved.
Well, I just wanted to let you know. That was directly from the ABEL Commission.
Well, it's helpful to know about, about the waiver.
And she consulted her general counsel before answering me back.
Thank you.
Cause I wonder if, if there was not a concern from the ABEL Commission, would there be any protest to this from the community, from the business owners? If everyone can coexist, then would there be an issue?
Specifically related to the offices?
Uh, I guess, I guess either or. Would you like to address this? Yes, thank you. Name an address, please.
I'm Keely Northup. I live at eight two six Mimosa Drive in Guthrie. I probably have a front row seat to what it's like to be adjoining a church for the last twenty years. I own the building at one oh nine East Oklahoma. Um, my business is located there too and the entire time I have owned that building, up until the last year, I had a church as a neighbor. I had a parole office on the other side and a church on the other. Guess which one I had problems with? It was not the parole office. It was a constant, constant problem for us beyond what even Elaine has had with the ABEL Commission, uh, and with youth center. The biggest problem we had is when they would have their youth in. Now, I don't doubt that Mr. Ho would have maybe a better caliber of people than what I encountered, but we're opening Pandora's box. I mean, leadership could change at his church as they do, another church could come in because we would have a hard time denying their special application if promoting his. I have had vandalism, destruction of property, loitering, littering, and I'm not talking just pop cans. We have condoms, drug use, cigarettes. These kids would have on ankle monitors. They would block access to my building, they threatening that. They were like, mom, we couldn't even leave. My tenants couldn't get in our apartment. I would have to call the police frequently and there's little you can do with these juveniles. I even put cameras out front just because of youth loitering. And I feel like we are inviting that. Um, the thing is, you know, like with the church next door, I could go over and talk to the pastor sometimes and say, hey, this can't happen, but they can't control what these kids do coming and going. They would show up early, it's an excuse to get out of the house. They would go to their youth activities and then when they left, they just hung out and they just parked in front, you know, our building. Uh, I have a rear and a front entrance. My rear entrance is gonna share the same parking lot. I can see what's going on over there. And I was just shocked after, was it seventeen years ago, I believe, we put this, you know, restriction where they had a special use permit in place. Only within the last year have we finally, finally got rid of the last church downtown. And I can't believe that we're even considering opening this door back up. It has been nothing but a problem for me. I'm highly opposed to, to this. You know, under ideal circumstances that are being described, maybe it wouldn't be so bad, but the problem is we can't control that. Um, you know, I have a long viewpoint, twenty years, a lot of things change. Will he be there at the church for twenty years?
I would be, would.
But reality is, he may not. You know, leadership changes, management changes. Um, and then what do we do when the next church wants to open up? How are we going to permit that from happening? We can't say, I'm sorry, they can have a church because they seem like really nice people, but you can't because you're really tacky. We can't do that. And so it's just opening this all back up. And as a property owner, as a business owner, I am just aghast that this is even being discussed. I mean, seventeen years it has taken. That's how long we've had this. It's never been challenged, I think, before now. It has taken that long to get the last church out. And it does, um, it does go with the property, cause that was the big problem. Frank Davis owned the building next to me that had the church. Multiple churches would rotate in and out of there. Sometimes I'd think, alright, we've hit twelve months, I haven't seen anything go on. City couldn't do a thing about it. Here would come another one and another one and another one. And it just, seventeen plus years. So you really have to think about the bigger picture. This isn't just about one property. This isn't just about one church. It's the bigger picture, the impact that it has because, I mean, I've just had very short time to do the happy dance since, uh, the building has sold and it is no longer gonna be a church. And I'm just horrified that this, it might, could happen to us again. I've worked very hard at my business. I've invested everything I have into it. I have a very nice business. I bring people in from all over. I am a destination. I don't rely on tourists coming into our town. I bring the tourists. I have a very high-end clientele and I really hate for us to slip backwards.
Thank you very much.
We worked hard many years ago to get the city ordinance in place to notify everyone within three hundred feet if this change of use was going to happen. And I don't think that's been done in this case, um, because the, the use was supposed to be everyone notified, not just the people that are residing there now, but the building owners and everything, and to get concurrence from everyone within that three hundred feet. And now you're talking about just doing a special use permit that ignores that. So I'm, I'm concerned.
Can you speak to that, Dan?
Yeah, that's not accurate. And it may have been the intent, but the final ordinance that was put in place simply said that a church use is a special use permit, so it's bound by the special use permit process, which simply is to notify all property owners within three hundred feet. It doesn't require, uh, concurrence necessarily or right, you know, any of that. So that might have been the intent, but the actual ordinance is, uh, special use permit.
So as it currently stands, any, any church that is desiring to have church activities in the downtown would have to get approval through a special use permit by, by the city council ultimately?
Yeah.
In order to operate such?
Yes, through, yeah, right. Cause the special use permit process is a recommendation from the planning commission and approval from the, or decision by the council.
Well, if you gave him a special use permit and it was for his church and his offices, could the special use permit not be voided if he ever sold or left the...
If there were conditions that were put upon a special use permit and they were not in compliance with those conditions, there could potentially be an avenue to re, uh, to basically revoke the permit. However, if the use is allowed to exist with no specific conditions, then no, you just can't go take it away.
I think, I'm not, I'm not sure what to think. I know, I know everyone's experience is different. Not all churches are created equal, not all bars and restaurants are created equal, but it's just, it's just sad that we might have a greater concern about a, a church activities than a, a bar in terms of public safety or nuisance.
It's the business. It's not necessarily the bar or the church. It's the business structure of downtown.
And that's the kind of thing that's kept Guthrie from really developing the way it should.
Sir, 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 could you come up to the podium, please?
Yeah, but we need to hear you. We need to hear you.
Yeah, uh, anybody obviously can speak, but if you do, please come to the podium.
I mean, when I was in, when I was in college, I read a book called Bowling Alone about how, uh, churches and civic institutions build social capital and they're good for communities. And, uh, and that has stuck with me. I think we can, I think we can coexist. Now, I certainly do not want to hinder any businesses, any activity that's already existing or, or future growth at all, but man, it feels like we're micromanaging what people are doing on their private property.
The only thing I want to add, because we're, I guess, focused on the alcohol, but I believe the O M M A also includes churches in school in their one thousand foot, uh, distance for a dispensary to exist. So even outside the alcohol part of it, if the church were in the downtown, uh, probably every dispensary in the downtown would be in violation.
Do all the commissioners have a chance to read this letter from, I did, from the residents downtown? I mean, owners?
I certainly value the, the voice of our residents and business owners and property owners. I just, like, the optics of, you know, out with the churches, in with the, I don't want to sound old-fashioned, out with the churches, in with the dispensaries and, um, and bars, but in other areas, they coexist. They, they, that's, that's a city. That's a, a diverse ecosystem of people and groups and activities.
I'd rather have the church than the dispensary.
And I'm glad we have all of it. I mean, I know some folks need, need their medicine.
I think the problem for some of the downtown owners that our downtown wasn't designed to have churches in it, you know?
Sure, that's a, that's a newer sort of thing, I suppose.
When you do this office, Mr. Ho, when you do the office here, if you got the permit, I didn't ever catch what all you're gonna do at the offices.
Alright, basically, we'll be, it'll be a pastoral office. So there'll be, we have three pastors. We have executive pastor, an associate, and myself. So there'll be three offices. It's not very large. And we'll have a conference room where all of us could come together. So we'll be there from nine to five every day and, uh, people will be coming to see us about various things and we'll be planning the future and all that. But there, we won't have services there. We won't have things like that going on there. I mean, the other day, we had, we had, we had twelve pastors come see us at one time. That was unusual. It was very exciting. I was glad to see all of them. And we sat around, jammed around the conference table and, and talked, but, uh, that's not a normal, it's not a normal thing. It's like any office, really. You know, the office, it'd be like a lawyer's office, really, in, in a lot of ways.
And if somebody decided to have a prayer meeting, would that suddenly make it non...
Yeah, that would be a church activity.
Suddenly would be prohibited if they started to pray?
Not if they pull, pull the blinds down.
You're, you're pastor, so you're gonna be praying. A lot of people come wanting to pray.
You can pray any, anywhere.
Yeah, exactly. Well, you go out in the street and pray for a little bit. I do think, if I may say, I, I do think there's a way for, for everybody to, to, I think it may be a problem that really doesn't exist. I mean, there's no reason why, there's gonna be all sorts of various, uh, businesses in any city that's gonna cause problems. Sure. You know, it just, with people coming. And anytime we're drawing crowds, that's gonna, that's gonna take place. So I, I don't think, if I were, if I could be so bold, I, I don't think it's something you need to be overly concerned about. I think if you give special permit, uh, use permit, then you give a special use permit. I don't think that keeps anybody from doing anything close to you that wants to go ahead and do something in their, in their facility.
When I read that the youth center, the youth center's not gonna be at your offices, is that right?
No, no, no. The youth center's the old, to me, it's the old Ford building. I knew when Tommy Harris had the Ford place there.
Different location.
Yeah. Now, that is a different situation.
Yeah.
If you want to talk about that.
Do we, so do we want to treat, I'm fine with treating this as an office if you say it's an office and allowing it to go forward, but if, if the ABEL Commission is now aware of it...
Contingent on the ABEL Commission on, if they would...
I think, I think, uh, I'm sorry. But Elaine said, well, go. The ABEL Commission said, we could sign a waiver, we should allow anything to go in around us. I mean, if that's necessary, we'd be happy to do it. And if our, if our use permit has to be based on the fact that we signed a waiver, then make it like that. And if we ever didn't sign the waiver...
And the dispense, and the dispensary, uh, laws, would that, how would that affect...
I think it would probably pertain the same way, I would think.
Sure. Whatever, whatever.
Does ABEL control dispensary?
Nope, completely different agency. It's the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Association that regulates the dispensaries, the grow facilities, anything related to that.
So could we, could we recommend approval on condition that they sign a waiver?
Yeah.
And that if they vacate those offices, some other church, then the special use permit is no good?
No, you can't do that.
Can't do it?
Cause again, as was stated, it goes with the land. You know, when you do, you know, any type of conditional use permit, special use permit, that type of thing, it goes with the land. The only thing that there is available to, if you want to say control that, is even in our current code, if a use does not exist on a property for greater, or if, if the use is more, is, has been stopped, removed, or gone for more than twelve months, then you lose any legal nonconforming or the nonconforming goes away. So if there's a special use permit at this property and the church office goes away and eighteen months later, somebody else wants to come in, they could not. They would have to get another special use permit. However, if that church leaves and in six months, another church use or office, whatever it is, wants to come in, they still fall under that existing permit.
So is, so this was brought to our attention because a church is planning on having some activity in the downtown, is that right?
It, well, it was, yeah, it was a twofold thing. One, yes, it was, it was a church, but number two, we did not receive any, if you want to say, concrete information on exactly what was going to be transpiring, what was not gonna be transpiring and that. So we can only assume that there would be some religious activities and thus that would make it a special use permit for approval.
So if somebody moves into a, a space downtown, what's the mechanism for us to review what the activity is going to be there? Do they have to get a business permit or...
No, we don't have business licenses. A lot of it is, usually comes to our attention that they're doing work without permits or they're doing signage without approval. That's usually the two things that kick it in. One of the things that kicked this in is there was signage that went up without any approval from the HPC and then that led to further discussions on the different activities that may be happening. And then at that point, it was determined that it would need a special use permit.
I mean, it sounds to me like he's gonna have pastoral offices, so is he gonna have what it sounds to me like?
Honestly, one of the determinations from you guys could be that you feel it's an office, it's strictly an office, and there's not gonna be any religious activities and you go ahead and approve it. Now, again, as we stated, from ABEL or others, it could be seen differently. I don't know, but from a, you know, from this point, yes, that could be a determination because that's part of the public process is the availability of the applicant to come here and explain exactly what they're doing that otherwise may not have been known. Same with the next one that's coming up, uh, similar thing. I think that one, as even the applicant indicated, is, is, you know, different, but if even the commission determines that this is an office and nothing more than an office, and, and just real quick before I probably belabor this way too much, uh, the, you know, again, in, in the code, there isn't a distinction of, of church use versus, you know, religious activity, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and, and that type of thing. And so again, we usually look to regulate what the most restrictive use or potential for use is in that. But, you know, again, there's not even a determination or a thing in there that says a church that happens to have an office versus, you know, an office that happens to be church people inside, you know, or a church-owned office, you know, you know what I'm saying? And that, that's another distinction that's not clear in code and in most codes, you know? So it could very well be looked at that this is truly an office use and thus the special use permit's not necessary. That could be the determination.
That's gonna be registered under the church, though. I mean, the ABEL and Oklahoma Medical Marijuana, they're gonna look at it...
Like I said, you're right. On, uh, other agencies may not see that the same way, you know?
So a waiver, yeah, waiver, I don't think really it would be satisfactory because it's not gonna satisfy them. So I think, I don't know, just probably have to table this till we find out a little bit, uh...
Now, this won't go to council until we take action, right?
Well, right, if you decide to table it, then it can't go any further, because the, the process is essentially stopped at that point. Like I said, I, you know, being a recommendation body, I think there can be a, you know, recommendation, or at least input from you guys, and even potential conditions put, so we can move forward. In the interim, we can look to reach out to the ABLE Commission and even O M M A, and see if what a lot of what was stated tonight, it would be the case, and that, and then that information could be provided to the council, along with your recommendation, and obviously, the minutes from this meeting.
Do we have a motion? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
My name's Doug Powell, and just for the record, the church does not own either one of these properties. They are owned by one individual, one man, that is investing in these properties. Just so you know, the church does not own either one of the properties. I presently own part of one of the properties still, until it's paid for. Thank you.
I'll just say that the applicant, or Mr. Powell is correct, the actual ownership is not in the church's name. The one is being, the other property is being leased. However, again, just like we have with the zoning code in that, a lot of times, it may be based on the use and that, and, and the ownerships are relevant. So, you know, whether it's the ABLE Commission or those, whether it's in the church's name or not, may not be relevant. I just, again, just want to point that out. Yeah, and, and, yeah, more because the church is occupying the use, yeah, and that could very well be.
So is the building owner that gets the special use permit?
They, they are part of the application, but like I said, any of those permits go with the land, in that. So a special use permit, if approved, would go with the land, unless the use were to go away for more than 12 months, then that use permit would no longer be valid. But land use is always based on, or any permits, or, you know, just like a building permit or what, in that, at the time, whatever owner may get it, but it's still something that's on record and still goes with the land or the building and that. It's not specific to a particular owner.
You said it could expire?
Yeah, our, our current code for the, basically, in the legal nonconforming type stuff, what it says is if a use on a property is, is, goes away in his, for longer than a 12-month period, that is then considered no longer valid in that. So like, in instance, again, with a special use permit, because you're having a special use approval and not a permitted use, if this particular church goes away, another church could come in, but again, at a point where it would exceed 12 months of vacancy, if you want to say, or the use being gone, it would fall under that provision where it's gone. So then, if somebody comes in, like I said, if it's not there for 18 months, somebody else comes in and wants to do the use, they have to go through the same process again. They lose any of those previously approved, or the previously approved permits and any conditions or allowances.
We'd have to set it up with this office thing, that it was just an office, it was never a church, right?
Says it on the window, and they'll consider it a church.
So I guess next time, don't put a sign up, and then you'll be fine. Or, yes, mm-hmm.
One thing to consider is that, I forgot what I was gonna say, I'm sorry. You know, it's not just about this one person, you know, like you said, if we grant them a per special use permit, it's gonna be difficult if another church comes in to tell them, no. Is that right? Are we gonna be on shaky legal footing?
Well, yeah, it, it, you know, and again, it's not to say that it can't, but yes, you know, precedent gets set, and precedent is huge in, in the zoning land use arena, and there's case law that would drive all of us crazy in, in the many avenues that that goes into. But just like when you do variances in, in that, you know, if you truly have a unique situation in that, it's much easier to, if you want to say, uphold or continue. But my only point was, is when you're in a central business district like this, it is a very small defined area compared to citywide. So the justification to say this use is appropriate at one location versus another gets very difficult, because again, you have a much smaller defined area that does not have the diversity that you generally would have citywide. So there is the potential to say, yes, if we approve this use, it's gonna be difficult to approve a similar use, or not approve or deny a similar use somewhere else.
Well, and to that end, one of the reasons Frank continually kept a church in that building is because there is an exemption from property tax for property owners who either are churches or lease their property churches. So he had no insurance, no property tax to pay, and so there's an incentive. And if you look around downtown, not all of our buildings are owned by people who have the capital and the interest in upkeeping these buildings, but yet want tenants. So if we give them the property use, I fear that other building owners who are, have dilapidated buildings that no one would really want to rent, have then a reason to come for a special use, get a church similar to the outfit I used to have next door to me, no longer have to pay property tax on them, and they pay very little in rent. That was a situation, they got these churches, very underfunded, pay very little, they have to pay no property tax. And so by setting that precedence, we could really, like I said, be opening parenteurs' box, because there's a lot of motivation for some building owners to find churches to occupy the property. There's something to be considered.
So if we, if we decided it's office use only, then a special use permit is not required, so we wouldn't be issuing one, is that correct?
Yeah, that could be your recommendation, that you've determined that it is not any type of religious activities or a church use as per what the zoning code is, and it truly is an office use, right?
It would just be strictly.
Yeah, you recommend that the special use permit's not necessary, and move forward.
Well, I can see where that'd be a problem.
Because we're in the process, and, and you're a recommendation body, like I said, it would still go to the council, but that could be, again, your recommendation, that there's no need for the special use permit, that it's a office use only.
Do we have a, a motion for the office? So like he said, maybe there could be conditions, and I'm not comfortable, I'm not gonna entertain, I'm not gonna make a first motion, but I will second if I agree with it. But having some conditions, maybe we recommend that it be approved as an office use, and then the condition that if, if ABLE or another entity decides that.
But then we're gonna have to ask ABLE if we're just calling it an office?
Not necessarily, because like I said, we, at the local level or at the city level, may determine it's simply an office, but ABLE may see it differently. Because like I said, every agency has their own kind of determinations on how they implement their regulations. I can tell you even from a zoning end, how I make a determination on a particular use is probably different than a similar person in another city that makes a determination on, you know, a similar situation, so.
Well, I mean, I don't even know why we're discussing it, if we're gonna make a recommendation just for an office.
Well, as I said, you know.
Office to start with.
Well, no, right, as I indicated, that may be what comes out of the, out of the meetings. We didn't have any clear-cut information, per se, to say that it wasn't in that, and so, you know, we, if you want to say, as staff, aren't gonna make a determination to say that, yeah, this is all good to go, no big deal, in that if there's gonna be, you know, some indication that it may need to go through a permitting process. So again, between you and even the council, it may be determined, in this case, we don't need a special use permit, and they can go forth happily ever after as an office use.
If council sees it a different way, then we're back to where we started from, pretty much.
Well, no, I mean, the difference is, they can obviously make a determin, or make a decision then at that level.
They need a special use permit.
Right, and if they determine that a special use permit is needed, then they can move forward with either approving that, denying it, or approving it with conditions.
Yeah, I, I would like for council to have the opportunity to, to make a decision and with our recommendation.
I'll make a motion, then we call it office space.
Is there, just real quick, is there, is there a second? Okay, I, I didn't hear another motion. We have this.
I mean, a second, yeah, we have a motion, but so far, there's not a second.
I will second the motion.
Okay. And, and just so I'm clear, yeah, basically, you're making a motion that you, as the planning commission, have determined that a special use permit isn't necessary, because it is strictly an office use, thus, they can obviously just, or, I mean, be forth as a permitted use as an office. Okay. Just want to make sure and for the record, okay.
Okay, any further discussion or comments?
The thing is, is like, you know, this is great, and I understand the office part, but if once you put the church's name, church office, whatever, X Y Z church, office, and the ABLE Commission sees that name on there, are they gonna see it the same way? I think that should get clarified before we move forward on that, because if the ABLE Commission says, well, sorry, Guthrie, it's a, it's a church property, that's the thing we're not clear on here.
Well, I think we could still be checking with the ABLE Commission and the other.
As, as I indicated. Right, as I indicated, in order to keep kind of the process going, because I know the applicants obviously want determinations done, or some finality to the situation as well, to have them be able to progress, so like I said, in the interim, from tonight's meeting, we will be looking into that, and even talking to our city attorney on that regard, so then that information can be provided to the city council, and again, then they have everything from the commission.
Council will have even more information.
Yes, more information, yeah, because they are ultimately the decision-maker.
Yep. Are we ready to vote then, or any further discussion comments?
All right. Abe Gassimpor?
No.
Joe Chappell?
I'm gonna say no.
Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Don McBride?
Yes.
All right, it's two-two tied, so that basically means that motion failed, because it's a two-two tie, and we need at least a three to one with four of you. Now, obviously, the, you can make another motion if, if desired.
So the motion died, okay.
But that one, yeah, failed because it's a two-two vote.
If we, if we don't move anything forward, then is it essentially tabled and could be brought back? Or does it mean it's a no? Does a tie mean a no?
Well.
On approving the application or recommending it?
Right, I mean, essentially, without making a recommendation or moving forth, it would, in my opinion, be the same as no action, which means it would essentially be tabled.
So if we recommend it, even if we recommended denial, just to move it forward, I would like the council to have the chance to make a decision, and it's clear that we're split, and it's a tough decision.
I don't mind to make a motion for approval, subject to providing a letter or some kind of approval from ABLE and Oklahoma Medical Marijuana. We've got a lot of vacant buildings in here, and we're not gonna really kind of stop the, the downtown being occupied by certain businesses. So unless we have a letter from ABLE that, that this is not gonna affect the other businesses, I'm all for it.
We didn't make a motion that way.
Does it say, is that your motion, Mr. Gassimpor?
An office space.
But they're gonna be church, though.
But, if he puts church up there, and the ABLE Commission comes out, they're gonna say he can't do it.
It sounds like they've already been alerted, but.
But it, was that another motion?
I made a motion for approval, subject to.
Yeah, okay.
Approve it as a church, as a church or as a special use permit?
With special use. As whatever it is they're gonna use it for, I want a letter from ABLE.
No, right, it would be as, as special use for a church office, in that, subject to the ABLE and O M M A approvals or waivers.
I'll second that.
So a, a special use permit.
Yes. Yes.
Because, all right, so we have a second, right? So my comment is, if we're issuing a special use permit, that is, that's gonna have a longer-lasting effect than it being just an office. Well, if there's concern about if there's another entity that comes in, or if we're setting a precedent by giving a special use permit.
James Long, 512 West Washington, you allowed the special use permit, now you, as a municipal body, are telling the ABLE Commission that you are recognizing it as a church facility. If they do not want, wish to issue permits, you can get a signature from somebody at ABLE today, but that doesn't mean that their successor will see it the same way.
He's not wrong. Because like I said, every jurisdiction has.
So by issuing a special use permit, we're saying it's a church.
No, that's correct.
By not, we're just saying it's an office.
Right.
To me, that sends us a little.
But the motion to say that we, that you feel it's an office and not a church failed, so you can't make a similar motion, because.
Right, but I didn't know if he was maybe adding, if he was making the same motion with the condition, or making them.
You can consider it as the same motion with the condition, that's fine.
Or would you like it to be a special use permit as the, as the.
Okay, so.
As our discussion has.
No, right, so just to make sure, your motion was to say that, so, so people understand, the motion was to, well, the problem is, here's the problem, and I had to wrap my brain around it. If you've determined it's a permitted use, which office is, you're saying, yes, the special use permit is no longer needed. You can't condition that, it's a permitted use. Now, if you turn around and say, okay, we think it is, you know, a, requires a special use, because it is some type of church activity in that, then the special use, you can put conditions on, but you can't put conditions on a permitted use. So it has to be one or the other. You either say it's not, and it's an office, or we move forward with a special use permit that says it is a church, or you're gonna have church activities, and you want the specific conditions to be met in order for it to be able to proceed.
The, the condition being that we get a letter, is that part?
Or at least, or some determination if they will do, from ABLE and.
Say that again.
I'd have to get a legal determination, I don't know, you, you know, if you have a motion and a second that's failed, and you're, in essence, taking no action, I don't know how you move a permit through the process when it requires some type of action at the planning commission level.
It doesn't require approval, though.
No, doesn't require approval, it doesn't require, yeah, right. Because like I said, regardless of what your determination is, it's a recommendation, and so then it moves forward to planning, or to city council.
Right.
May I ask you a question, just a clarification? So if you give us a use permit, you're saying that we are, we can do church activities in that facility, correct? And if you say, no, it's just an office, then you're saying we can't do church activities, is that how?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and there's, there's not a definition of church activity, so that's hard.
If we adopt the use permit, it would give us greater freedom.
Yes, but it might, I don't know what weight it would carry with the ABLE Commission for us to just say it's an office.
I understand, I just want to make sure I disagree.
But if there's a concern about this special use permit being tied to the property for a period of time, if there is a different entity using it. Okay, so.
I mean, I guess, I, I don't know, I, I guess, to, for things to move on, you know, I guess we could say that, in essence, the motion and the second, and, and a lack of, of determination or whatever, we can move it forth, and I guess, say, the planning commission had no recommendation. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I would hate to.
Or we could look at it as saying, yeah, it's denied. Because a lot, generally, if you do have, if, if you have a recommend, or if you have a body that is making the decision, and you have a tie vote, and that it generally does look as it's failed, and if nothing else comes up, then it's the same as being denied.
Would you state your motion?
Well, right now, it's just a tied vote, is that right?
Correct.
If our motion is still on?
Can we make a recommendation, move it on to the city? Can we make a recommendation moving on to the City Council?
Well, like I said, given the circumstances, we could probably do it because it's a recommendation body. If, if you were the decision-making body, then we, you know, there would be something. So you could withdraw your motion in the second that came around second, and we'll just move it on to the City Council with the two-two tie.
Can we make a motion to recommend to City Council with no action on our part? That's the motion?
Well, I mean, to some extent, you've done that if you do nothing more.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion to withdraw?
Yes, since there's technically one on the floor and a second. So if you want to withdraw your motion and you're okay with the second, we'll just leave it as a tie and we'll move it on.
I mean, it's not going to move on unless we do.
No, I understand. I, you know, again, I just, in a lot of these cases, I hate to hold applicants up with some of this, especially when it's a recommendation part of it where the decision-making aspect still has to be done because there's obviously timing on their end as well for some decision. So, because at this point, then we've basically delayed it another 30 days. So the.
So do we need a motion to withdraw the motion?
Well, no, I was going to say if Mr. Gassimpor would, yeah, and then you're fine with withdrawing your second. That's all we need. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So that'll just go on to the City Council. And just for the sake of the public, these will go to the first meeting or the first council meeting in September, because that's normally how we have these from the Planning Commission. Any items will go to the following month's first meeting of the City Council, which is September 1st.
Okay. All right. Our next item is PC Application 20-009, Discussion and Potential Action on a Request for a Special Use Permit to Allow for a Church Youth Event Center, Church on the Hill, that will include recreational activities and youth ministry services in a building located at 202 East Harrison Avenue. Of course, there's some overlap with what we've just talked about, but is there anything?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was just going to add that obviously, this is a different location. This is over on Wentz and Harrison. It was previously the Vance Upfitters Building and that. And this one is a little difference in that they're looking to have recreational activities, but it was also our understanding to have religious activities or ministry activities. Again, if that's something that's changed or different, the applicant's here to answer it. But the land use is different, and obviously, just in general, the land use is much more of an impact because just the sake of the recreational activities in, in that. So the other one's an office, which probably is going to have much less activity. This will have much more activity in, in youth activities. So anyway, with that, I'll put it back to the Commission. As, as Mr. Chapel indicated, this was the one where we had gotten a petition of, I think, 39 or 40 signatures that were in opposition to this particular use at this particular location. There are also three additional emails that I got that were provided to you along with your agenda, agenda tonight for the same thing, for not wanting the particular use at this location.
Any further questions or discussion? Has anyone not spoken on this?
I didn't know about the petition that would give us a chance to get petition. So I didn't know that was possible. If I'd have known that, we'd have had to see if the names would have rounded up for you.
I suppose there will be the opportunity, if this goes forward to council, to make your, make your case. So.
Say there, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. I'm so sorry. If you would state your name and address for us, please. Yes. Yes, please.
Bob Powell, 821 Shulgun Drive. I've lived in Guthrie all my life. Own two buildings downtown. And I would like to say that this is the first time that, I heard about this afternoon. We never knew about the petition. That petition is very selective of who they asked to sign it. They didn't ask everyone that has the downtown buildings or owners. We didn't know anything about it. So I think you should look at that petition with question mark on it. Had we known about it, well, we would have signed it or not signed it, but it was never talked to us. They selected who they wanted to to go get it to sign the petition.
Thank you.
I'll give you another thing. You know, there's, the concern is, I think, is the youth on the streets, is the way Ms. North was explaining it. You have the YMCA right down the street. You have the stadium right across the street where football games are for Friday night. This would be contained inside of that building. And I have personally seen the plans from my boss and what he wants to do inside of it. And it would be a fabulous facility and even an event center type. But I think it would help get the kids off the street and maybe give them some guidance. Thank you.
I'm back to the question. Is this going to then negate all Red Brick Nights as far as, you know, and thousands of people come out to that once a month? I mean, I mean, the downtown is really full. I mean, you can't get a parking place. And is it going to negate that with the ABLE Commission? That's the thing I'm concerned about.
What you're, what you're feeling on, on this one?
Oh, the same concern?
Right.
Same concern that we had on the other one.
Yeah, I mean, there are other places for youth to be that they currently gather, and they might pray every once in a while. It just seems strange to, to say no to that kind of activity. Yeah.
My problem is not necessarily with youth. Yes, we have the football. We have the YMCA. Never had a problem with them. And I don't believe that I would have a problem with Mr. Hope. I mean, this is not, though, just about you. It's not personal. But it's just that we're opening that door. And the type of youth that the other buildings that are, may not have the investment that you have, the type of churches we've had in the past, this is just open that door wide up for them to come on back, building owners to get no property tax. They don't bring this type of youth, not what we get with the football or anything else. The last group that I battled, and I have been battling this for 20 years, we had kids with ankle monitors on. I kid you not. I mean, this was not a good clientele. And because it's walking distance from downtown, it was an excuse to get out of the house. It wasn't contained. And, you know, there's nothing to stop what I had next door going on for so long to start again. You know, it's too bad that it can't just be, you know, we like you, but you can't do that. Just like you can't tell me, I can have a yarn shop, and they'll tell somebody two doors down, they can't because we don't like you as well, or you don't have as much money. It doesn't work that way. You have to have the same rule across the board. And I just, you know, after 17 years of waiting to finally get clear of this and being able to move forward, I hate it that we have to open this back up. You know, if we could just limit it to the Church on the Hill with Mr. Hogan charge, I'd be all for that. But unfortunately, that is not the situation.
My name's Derek Pierceall. I've got the building across the street to the south and the musler shop to the east of that.
Stand in front of the mic there. Thank you.
I didn't even realize it was on. My name's Derek Pierceall. I've got the building to the south and the building to the west of it, the musler shop. And I'm so close to school property, I couldn't get a liquor license anyway. And I couldn't put a dispenser in either, so that really isn't a concern for me. I think the thing that you got to think about when you start opening what she says, Pandora's Box, is it, do you want Guthrie to go that direction? Is that the kind of thing that you want to inhibit, inhabit the buildings downtown? Because as I understand, Red Brick Nights would be done if that, this happens. As far as alcohol sales go, I don't think that those vendors would be able to sell there. I, I don't know for sure.
Now, is it the proximity to the stadium that prevents you from?
So what I'm, what my, I just want you guys to think about is, would you rather have things like Red Brick Nights and things that entertain people, those kind of things? Is that what you want Guthrie to be, or do you want it to be? You know, not that Guthrie's going to be full of churches, but do you want to go down that road? Because I think she's right. I think once you open that, it's going to be real hard to say no to the next person. And I, you know, and I'm not really, I don't, I don't want to keep anybody from doing anything that they don't want to do. But I'd like to see Guthrie every night like Red Brick Nights. That's what I'd like to see. And so I just think you got to consider that when you start plugging churches in in different spots and whether the ABLE Commission will sign off on it or not. I don't think they will.
Yeah, we can decide what kind of land use is encouraged.
To me, is, you got to think about long-term, what kind of, that kind of decision.
So just for clarification, is it the stadium as school property that keeps you from?
I don't, I couldn't put a dispenser in.
Because that's within 300 feet of Red Brick Nights currently.
I'm fairly certain I couldn't put a dispenser in, but I'm very excited. Yeah, and I have, and I've talked to the tenant upstairs and the tenant downstairs, and neither one of them want it there. Just, they're just concerned about parking and, you know, that kind of, that sort of thing.
But Central is far, far enough away from downtown to allow for, no? Well, that's a school.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm not really concerned about that personally. I just, I just think you, you need to think about the big picture of what you want Guthrie to live for 20 years from now.
Thank you. Yes, councilman, he, he's.
James Long again, 512 East Washington. Perception is reality in everything, and I think part of these things, like for the youth and the investment that they're wanting to do in that building, I think is incredible. I don't think anybody is contesting that. I don't think anybody would want to deny that. The fact is, the mechanism that they're doing it through is through a church. I think that the application process would obviously look very different, probably wouldn't mean going through this process if the mechanism wasn't a church. Red Brick Nights is sponsored by North Church for the kids, but we're not utilizing the North Church flag to host Red Brick Nights. So they obviously need to come up with a different mechanism that's not the church, a different arm, a different LLC, something else to fund this so that they can have their youth center. I don't think anybody would disagree that, that there's, having youth isn't necessarily the issue. The YMCA is right there. It does not keep us from having any other businesses, but it's not a church. The YMCA is a nonprofit organization, but it's not a church. We are a municipal body. We cannot dictate how the ABLE Commission or O M M A will dictate or read anything. We have no control over that. We have to work within their parameters. They don't work within ours. So we understand and realize that if we were to approve this under their parameters, even if we get a waiver today, that waiver may not be good in five years. So now we've just shot ourselves in the foot. So if this is what we want, if we want them to be able to have their youth center, we need to visit with them and say, look, we have no objection to a youth center, but you have to understand the laws in which we have to operate, and you need to find a new mechanism in order to do that. Open up another LLC and funnel the money through that way, and so that way, it's, it's all legitimate and legal. And we're not sitting here giving a special use to a church because then as a municipality, we have recognized that we have given it to a church. And we cannot then go back to ABLE and say, but they're not doing church things. Well, then why did you give a special use permit to a church?
And the, and the applicant is not the church. It's Automex, correct?
The. No, right. I was going to say.
But we're sitting here recognizing that these are all those things. So if, if his, if his tenant is a church, then it's a church. He needs to find, it needs to be a different, different entity, in my opinion.
Any other questions for, for the councilman? I'm glad you're here, James, because, you know, you will enlighten the conversation at council. But, yeah, I mean, I know, I know a church in Oklahoma City donated land for the MAPS 3 Wellness Center, and they did it under a separate entity. And the church uses it, but only in certain hours, and it's not considered a church property. The, the land was donated to the city. So, yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to say earlier is, is there a way to? This seems to come down to technicalities, and, but that's the process that we work through.
Well, let me, let me ask the question for clarification.
Yeah.
Look, here's, here's my vision for this center. It's not just a recreation place. And we're, we're planning on having huge concerts. We're bringing in the top, top Christian musical groups in the country will be here. We're bringing on, there'll be symposians, there'll be seminars, there'll be all sorts of things that'll be going on. So I don't know, I don't know that that can be, I mean, we could say, okay, we're going to do this under X Y Z limited partnership or whatever, to get around the law with you maybe. But the point is, would that so limit us then that we could? I mean, I'm not interested in opening up a facility just to have kids, to have someplace to come and recreate. I don't think that's even needed. But I do think with all the programs we're talking about, obviously, it is needed. Every, every, every time we go anyplace in the city, and we're here all the time, we're talking to people, the first thing they say is, we need something for the kids. Well, they're not talking about just having someplace for them to go play. They're, they're talking about someplace where, you know, they're, they can receive the things they need for life, you know? So if, if we're talking about, if you're saying that Guthrie doesn't want that, then that's one thing. I, I understand. That's great. That's your choice. But I wouldn't, I don't want you to, I wouldn't want you to prove us going in to just do recreation.
Right. You don't, you don't want to, you don't want us to limit you.
Yes.
Even if that, even if that helps you get it through in some way.
No, please don't do that. Don't do that. Because I think if we did that, we, we wouldn't be being honest with you about what our thoughts are and our plans are about this.
Okay. Thank you. So, and, you know, sir, your point is well taken about what do we want to see more of in downtown Guthrie? And how can we encourage a certain type of, of business or activity?
But like James said, we're at, we're at the mercy of ABLE. And if we're at the mercy of these companies that tell us what to do because of what we have located different places.
Yeah, I think.
And that being said.
I think it is correct that if we send this on as a special use permit for a church, then, then that is going to.
I would just like to add, even as the applicant said, there's really no choice in this matter. They've openly said there's going to be religious activities there. So the only process in which to approve that is a special use permit. The other one, obviously, there was some distinction between the office and, and that, but in this case, there's not. So a special use permit would be required, period. So it's either going to be approve it for the religious activities or not.
Any questions, comments from the commission or a motion? Yes.
I'm Gregory Coleman, 911 East Harrison, or Hetty often as people know me by. There was a couple of things. I just wanted to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding this as well. I'm a pastor at North Church here in Guthrie. I'm also born and raised here. Love it. I feel like us as a church have, have invested in this community above and beyond in, in many different ways, including Red Brick Nights, which is not a Christian event. However, we come alongside Red Brick Nights and the city to be able to provide something like that. My concern with doing a church in downtown Guthrie, which is something that we've considered and tried to make sure that we are aware of how that's going to impact us from a business perspective. Quality of life often comes from entrepreneurs, people who've invested back in the city and do those certain kind of things. And oftentimes, the business district is where people establish these types of businesses. From what I understand, I want to make sure that I'm clear. The concern would be if we allow one church to do something downtown Guthrie, and then let's say, because our district is not very big, it's not the Oklahoma City size where you can have multiple churches within, in an area like downtown Oklahoma City, and they not cross over, they may not impact them as much. But I want to make sure that I'm hearing him correctly by saying land use. If we approve something like Pastor Hoag in, in Church on the Hill, that then there's this opportunity of other churches being able to come in because of perception or whatever. Then we have multiple, let's say that we have five churches in the business district, and then that's taken up opportunity for, for LLCs to come in, which would generate tax revenue and things of that nature, which could impact our city on a different scale than what a church who doesn't do those types of things typically. So there's a couple of things that I would ask. One, I want to make sure that's the case. And then the second being what James asked or was stating, or however you want to say that, is if the, the church came, or if there was an LLC that said, hey, we're going to rent out our space to Hoag and his crew for 12 months. The lease can't go any further than that. It's just a temporary lease towards that, but it's an LLC establishment, whatever, coffee shop, something, OKC Bridge downtown, Oklahoma City Community Church. Coffee shop, something, OKC Bridge downtown, Oklahoma City Community Church, right there on Twenty-third, partnering with Tower, doing some amazing things. So now you have an LLC who is a coffee shop, but they lease out their space to, to, uh, to a church, North Church, whatever. So now the LLC is providing taxes, thriving business, opportunity, things of that nature, and so I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear on those things.
Couple of things. First, on the, uh, on the approval. All I was, or all I was saying is there is some precedent that would be set. So if this special use permit were approved for a church, and another church comes in and says, hey, we want to be in the downtown because it's a great place and we see the other ones, so, and it would be very difficult for the planning commission, or especially the council, to say no in that, in a way that probably would not result in a legal challenge. That's the whole, that's the issue. Now, it may be if you tell the next one no, they may walk away. That's fine, you know? But, you know, I've been around long enough to see that in those type of instances, especially if there's enough resources, there's usually some type of legal challenge because they go on the basis of, you let that church in, you won't let ours, so you're either discriminating against us, or, you know, again, you don't have a good standing because what's the biggest, you know, there's really no difference than us being in this spot and a block down another church being there in that. And so that's the issues that you get. Now, going back, again, I want to say ownership is absolutely irrelevant. It has no factor whatsoever. You can put it under whatever ownership you want. All zoning codes and a lot of the regulations that ABEL and that have are based on use. If there's religious activities there, I don't care what it's under in that, it's religious activities, and thus it's going to require whatever permits. And so it's like here, the church doesn't own the property, they lease it in that. They may never own the property in that. But at the end of the day, they're looking to have religious activities or church-type activities which require a special use permit. I can tell you, ABEL and the other ones are usually the same way. They're looking more at use, more than they are ownership. Now, I could be wrong with them, maybe they take ownership differently, but generally on the government level with a lot of that, it's based on use in that. And that's why I was saying even with the permits itself, you know, it's irrelevant who submits it and who's the owner at the time because the permit goes with the land or the building and that. So it could have multiple ownership changes, and again, as long as that permit remains valid, whoever is there has the ability to utilize that permit and the uses it allows, and, you know, if there's conditions, obviously, they have to meet that, so.
All right. Is there a motion? Nobody can ever say that we just rubber stamp things here. I'm not comfortable making a motion as the chair.
This is a really tough thing. But all things considered, because of things that are outside of our control, I make a motion to disapprove.
There a second?
I will second that. I think.
What is the motion?
Most, motion to disapprove.
The motion was to deny the special use permit.
I'll second that. I think the point's well taken about Guthrie being a small footprint and that, that changes the dynamics compared to a larger city. Yeah.
Before you go on, is there, is there any way, I was thinking more like table it to be able to talk through how this partnership can work for.
We're just recommending.
I was gonna say, yeah, it, they're, it's gonna go to the council, so in the interim, you know, that can be done, and even at the council, you know, that discussions can happen and that, so this isn't the final decision tonight on either of the items. Okay, so we had a motion and a second for denial. Don McBride?
I'll abstain.
Joe Chapel?
Yeah.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes three to one. Okay. And, and again, just so everybody here knows, this will be going to the September first city council meeting that evening. And the same thing, if anybody has any questions in the interim, they're more than, they, or I'm more than happy to answer, and they can contact my office.
All right. Moving on to item six, PC application two zero dash zero zero five, discussion and potential action on a request for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for the John R. Flash Industrial Park located in the south half of the southwest quarter of section two township sixteen north, range two west, generally located on the east side of Midwest Boulevard, at the intersection of Midwest Boulevard and College Avenue. The plat proposes to divide the acre, the seventy-seven point two-four acre property into twelve industrial lots. And thank you, folks, for being here and for expressing your comments.
Appreciate your listening.
Hi, we got the item going. After the meeting, I can talk to you, but, or give me a call tomorrow. Yeah, if you hang around, I can afterwards. Yeah, you could, yeah, because it's not on the, that's HPC, that's something totally different. Yeah, so just give me a call tomorrow. Okay.
Staff report.
Yes, uh, the planning commission may remember, not too long ago, I think it was in July, there was a request for the same property for a rezone to I-1 for the city's industrial park. At the time, the planning commission had recommended denial, so we tabled the preliminary plat based on waiting for the council's decision. The council at the August, or the, yeah, August meeting, uh, the first meeting in August, had recommended or approved the rezone to I-1. So that's the reason that the industrial, or the preliminary plat is coming back. Hold on one second. The preliminary plat hasn't changed from what would have been presented last time. It's roughly seventy-seven point two-four acres and is going to be looked to be split into twelve industrial lots with roughly five acre lots on the western end and nine acre lots on the eastern end of the property. And just for the sake of the public, so they may know it's, you know, the property that's located at Midwest Boulevard and College Avenue, just north of where Love's and that is. The only thing I want to point out, because I know that there was, you know, concern from the planning commission with the rezone, this is a subdivision request, so it's slightly different than a rezone in that there are some property rights that are in here. So simply saying no because we don't like the project or we don't like the industrial park, that can't happen. The denial would have to be based on the subdivision plat not meeting any subdivision, if you want to say, regulations or standards. Staff has looked it over, and per our subdivision ordinance, even though it may be slightly outdated, it's still, uh, the proposed plat meets all of the conditions in terms of like length of cul-de-sacs, access, you know, and of course for the I-1, it's industrial, so there's no minimum lot sizes per se, so they're above that. So staff could not find anything with a preliminary plat that would be of issue from our subdivision ordinance. So based on that, the staff recommends that the planning commission approve the preliminary plat. The only last thing I want to add is this will have CCNRs, conditions, covenants, and restrictions attached to it, which you had a copy of last time. I provided it again, so there will be some restrictions, and of course, it is zoned I-1, so any use that is on these properties once subdivided would be subject to the I-1 zoning as well as the CCNRs. So with that, I'll give it back to the commission.
All right, is there a motion? What is the rush? I mean, could I ask why are we doing this?
Because we're going through the application process. The city council had put.
Do we have a buyer for these properties for lots?
Hmm, no, not necessarily. Without going into further, you know, detail, because like I said, you know, simply not being in favor of, of the industrial park is not justification to deny it. Right, the zoning's been approved. This is, you know, for the most part, a matter of right, you know, yeah.
Council approved the rezoning.
Yeah, yeah, so, so with that, like I said, you know, it, I understand there may be concerns about the overall project, but honestly, this isn't the application for that, because again, this is on the subdivision in which there is a matter of rights for anybody to subdivide their property as long as it meets the subdivision ordinance, and obviously our zoning.
So they went back treaty to like a subdivision instead of a, just a total industrial park?
Well, yeah, I mean, most, no, yeah, most industrial parks are, like what's here, they'll have the availability of a number of lots in that, and so that's what this is doing. Some of those lots could be combined, some of them could be split, you know, it just depends, but at this point.
Depending on what your purchaser wants.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah. It's no different than, you know, somebody buying two or three residential lots and combining, things like that could happen. But right now, this is how it would be subdivided.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion for, and I'm sorry, that is, Don? Okay, second. All right. Any further discussion?
Not really, I just, as a matter, I just a question, is there anything else with this project that will be coming to the planning commission, or is it all council at this point?
Yeah, the rest would be through council because everything else would be on the infrastructure end or a, a capital improvement program type of end or that. So the land use stuff would be taken care of, which was obviously the rezone and now the subdivision. Everything else would be at the council level.
This is the last time we'll have to see this.
Yes. Now, there, I, I guess I should say, there could be potent, well, no, I don't know, I was gonna, I was thinking if there was some special use permit in the I-1 or something like that, if, if somebody buys it. But, but the development of the property, no. So it's not to say that we may never see, you may never see anything on this property.
All right.
Now, is the city planning on doing the streets and stuff themselves prior to it, or they're gonna try to sell lots and then do the development?
No, my understanding is there's gonna be the street, some street improvements on, on, I think, college there in that, and then obviously the infrastructure, and then the streets, the internal streets, those will be done as well as water, as lo, as, yeah, cannot speak, as well as the water sewer and all that. The actual, probably getting them to the particular lots may be dependent on who may come in, but to the property itself, it will be there.
Will those come to coun, will those items come to council for approval, the expenditures?
Yes, yeah, because that's why I was saying, a lot of that is gonna be funded through the CIP. Yeah, but yeah, yeah, with the infrastructure.
They will still have to approve each step of the process.
Yeah, yeah, because obviously there will be contractors that will be putting in the physical improvements, and yeah, that'll go through the normal processes, bid process.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, are we ready to vote?
Yep, okay. Joe Chapel?
Yeah.
Abe Gassimpor?
No.
Don McBride?
Yes.
Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Okay, three to one.
All right. Am I required to read all this? No, I, I can for, for those reading on television.
You, you don't necessarily have to. I can probably sum, summarize it for you.
I don't mind, I don't.
Okay, I mean, if, if you wanted to summarize it, saying it's an amendment to our zoning code to amend the current PD ordinance.
That's all right. I might skip over a few parentheses or something, but. PC application two zero dash zero zero seven, an ordinance amending the city of Guthrie Code of Ordinances, amending chapter sixteen, planning and zoning article two, zoning, section sixteen fifteen, adoption by reference. By adding section eleven, plan unit development to article five, general provisions applying to all or to several districts, amending article three, establishment of districts, section one, by eliminating R-five, plan unit development district. Amending article four, specific district regulations by eliminating section six, R-five, plan unit development district PUD. And amending section seven point six, uses permitted by eliminating R-five from the uses permitted table. Amending section seven point seven yard requirements by eliminating R-five from the yard requirements table. Amending section seven point eight, intensity of use, lot width, coverage and height regulation by eliminating R-five from the intensity of use, lot width, coverage and height regulations table. And amending section ten point five, uses permitted by eliminating R-five from the uses permitted table. Staff report.
Did very well, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and, and as I said, all of that means we're, we're amending our current PD section in our current PD ordinance. One of the reasons that we're kind of moving this forward as a separate application versus in the zoning code update is there is the potential for a development that maybe need to utilize the PD process in that, and unfortunately, due to the outdated condition of our plan development ordinance, it is not going to serve a purpose to, uh, for what they, they want. And, and that'll lead me into, you know, the PD, our current PD ordinance itself. It was established in nineteen seventy-seven. It has gone virtually unchanged since that time. One of the things that that PD did, which may have been common back then, but is not common now, is it created as an actual separate zoning district. Most modern PDs work as kind of an overlay, and it, and it could be for any zoning district, whether it's residential, whether it's commercial, or whether it's industrial. So the, generally, instead of having a separate zoning district, if you were going to do a PD in the R-one, you would have it from R-one to R-one PD. So even if somebody looked on the zoning map, they would see that there's a planned development that approved that. And then with that, generally, a planned development means there's a specific development plan, there may be specific conditions, exceptions, et cetera, et cetera, that are done. And so, and even if you read our current PD, it really was set up for more like you saw probably in the seventies, eighties in that to where it was to try to, uh, try to create a small community, you know, rather than be more specific to a property or two. Because even one of the permissions says that the, you know, it should be sufficient size to accommodate a hundred families. Well, a lot of the PDs we have may not have that, and on the commercial side, it basically would eliminate any of the possibility of the PD on the commercial side. So anyway, we're updating that. And I'll briefly go over, obviously, the proposed ordinance was provided to you, but, but I'll hit prob, most of the main spots. The modern PD, and I like to call it modern just because ours is so old. Again, it, it does a couple of things. One is it does allow for developments to go through a process in which maybe the underlying zoning standards don't fit perfectly in what they want to do. One example I like to give, and, and actually will be probably similar to what one of the upcoming PDs may be, is you have a lot of residential subdivisions that are looking to create walkability, having parks or open space, having trails and that. Well, in order to do that, they essentially clustered their residential or their houses in a portion of the property. And so in doing that, a lot of times, they may be looking for smaller lot sizes, maybe five thousand square feet, our code says six thousand. There may be zero lot line development, maybe, again, with patio homes and that. And so the PD ordinance allows that. It says, okay, the fact that you're gonna provide this open space and maybe some playgrounds, and, and again, some trails and that, we can go ahead and say, these exceptions are gonna be okay, because, you know, we're, we can allow it to be five thousand square foot lots and zero lot line and things like that. So that's what the PD, you know, is there kind of on the development in. Now, the other aspect that's part of the PD that works is it's a certainty for the city, as well as even residents, to know exactly what's gonna go in there. There are some cases where they're not even looking for a zone change. They may have, again, a, well, and, and I guess a good instance may be where, you know, not too long ago, we had a proposal where they were gonna maybe do kind of small, like, I guess cottages or, or retreat type, uh, units. The problem was, is we didn't have really a PD to go through, have it go through, and so it was kind of an all or nothing from the zoning aspect. It was an open-ended thing. With the PD, you can go through that process and go maybe even from an R-one to an R-two, and that specific development plan then can be approved to where it can limit the density, saying, okay, you want eight units? That's all you're getting. We got the eight units. It also obviously provides an opportunity to put conditions on that, too, whereas a straight of head rezone is, you know, you can't do that. So it, it allows the. rezone is, you know, you can't do that. So, it, it allows, again, some flexibility even on the city's end, but more importantly, in a lot of cases, gives some assurances to adjacent property owners that, yes, all we're getting out of this is, you know, this. And much like a special use permit or anything else, it goes with the land. So, if somebody comes in and gets a plan development approved, and they say, well, I don't want to do it, and they sell the land, the next person coming in has to develop it per that development plan and meet any and all conditions. If they want to change it, it has to go back through the same process in which it was approved. So, again, that's, you know, the, the basic premise behind it, and that works much better than having a separate zoning district. Now, just to add, there are some properties in town that are zoned R-five, and, and I think we talked about this in the zoning code update, in that fortunately, they're very few, so it'll have minimal impact on those existing zonings. But basically, tho, all those properties don't even have a development plan that I'm aware of or can find associated with it. So, they can have the opportunity to go through the PD process that we would have here, which would be simpler, because most of them are small properties. Or they could potentially rezone to, if they're in an area where maybe it's suitable for residential or commercial or something like that. So, the, the good thing is by eliminating this zoning district, we're not going to affect a lot of properties in the city. So, with that, the one thing I wanted to add is, as I indicated, there are provisions in the PD, because the other thing that the PD would do is just, this code says, is you have two years. So, once in a PD's approved, you have two years to basically have building permits issued and work started. If not, the PD expires. So, it's not in a, you know, forever type of, of thing. And then on top of that, the city council could allow an extension of one year. So, if they come in and they're at that one and a half month and go, okay, or one and a half year, and they're like, all right, we're, we're almost there, give us an extension, they can do that. The other element is, is there's two aspects in terms of like amendments and additions, major amendments and minor amendments. The major amendment would require it to go through the same processes which it was approved, which would be the planning commission for a recommendation and the city council for approval. Because with the PD, it will act like a zone, or like a rezone. It'll have the same notification requirements and, and again, the same process. Now, there is a section that's minor amendments that would allow some change, but not major change. And, and a lot of that is because, you know, even when you do a development plan, once you start getting your actual engineering in, and you start moving dirt and that, you do get to a point where it's like, oh, well, you know, we need to move this building slightly, or we need to decrease this building, or we ended up having this building slightly larger or something like that. So, the minor amendment would allow an increase in floor area for non-residential, meaning like a commercial building, but no more than five percent. It would allow, but it does not, the, but the dwelling units could be decreased, but not more than but five percent. Because again, a lot of times, it's approved based on getting a certain number of, of residential or density, and if all of a sudden, they come in and cut it by fifty percent, yeah, some might not think that's a big deal, but it's not what was approved. So, there can be some reduction in the density, but again, five percent is the limitation. Same with building coverage, cannot increase building height, and then finally, there can be up to a ten percent in land coverage in that, or up to ten percent in, in land coverage, and that's kind of overall. Those would be allowed as a minor. Anything beyond that would have to go through the major amendment process in that. So, with that, as you probably read, there's some general provisions that are in there. As, as I indicated, there is the ability to get exceptions for certain standards, but again, even as it's written, they're going to have to have some justification or proof, or say, okay, if you give us, again, a reduction in, in lot sizes and, and that, we're going to provide more open space, or we're gonna provide more trees, or we're gonna provide more trails in that. So, it isn't a process to look simply for exceptions to code standards. It's not a variance process. So, there has to be something there that is gonna be a benefit basically to the public in order to get those exceptions. So, if somebody, again, wants to simply go through, because we don't want to deal with six thousand square foot lots, we want five thousand. If that's all they're trying to do, that's not the PD process in that. And then, again, it's the same with density. With the updated zoning code, as we discussed, there would be densities that'll be put forth in each zoning district. There would be the ability to increase density through a PD. However, there's a stipulation in there that it can't be more than, I think it was fifteen percent is what I had in there, fifteen or twenty percent in that. But again, even in that regard, it's going to have to be with some justification, not simply, we just want more, more density in that. And then the rest of it, more or less, talks about the, oh, it's twenty-five percent, sorry, it's twenty-five percent increase, which may sound like a lot, but in a lot of cases, it's not. And the other important part of it is, it cannot allow a use that is otherwise prohibited within that zoning district. So, again, if you're going through a PD in an R-one, it can't allow for multifamily dwellings. It would have to be going through a multifamily rezone or something like that, and the same on the commercial side. You know, if you're in a C-two, it can't allow light industrial uses within that. So, that pretty much sums up all that. And like I said, we're moving this forward, because obviously with the zoning code, it's gonna probably take a little bit longer, and it may not be till the end of the year or beginning of next year before we get that in place. And as some of you may know, in that, one of the ones that may be looking to utilize this was for the phase two emission hills. They're looking to move forward much quicker than our zoning code, so we wanted to move this forward. So, like I said, there's an opportunity for that development to go through the process. And because of that, as we talked, and I'll talk more about it, or a little bit more, it will now be an amendment by creating section eleven of the existing code versus what I think I had it as section eighteen in the proposed code. So, we did some changes on that. So, anyway, I've talked plenty. So, with that, be putting it back to commission for any comments or questions.
Did you say that you went from five percent to twenty-five percent?
No, the, the twenty-five percent is, there's, there's a couple things. The five percent is a minor amendment that can be done administratively. The planning director or I have the ability to approve up to a five percent difference in a plan development. Through the plan development process, they can request an approval for more density if there's justification, but it can exceed a twenty-five percent increase of what our code already allows. But that is not something that can be done administratively. That would be through the process and approved by the council or, or a commission slash council.
All right. I make a motion to approve unless anyone has more questions. It is a lot.
Yes. Much like everything, it's not always simple, but, you know, it, it's like I said with the zoning code, it's important to have a lot of these different things in place, because it does serve both sides. It helps to, you know, on the applicant's side in a lot of cases, but also on the, you know, benefit of the community side.
Yep.
So, there was a motion by Mr. Chapel, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Gassimpor.
So, what we're approving with this is basically adding the section, planning and development, and that affects all the other sections, because you're having to-
Yes, and, and-
Take stuff out.
Right.
Reword it, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I probably should elaborate a little more, and that's why that was that big introduction, is currently, like I said, our PD is as an existing zoning district, which is R-five. And so, we would be taking away all R-five and any reference to R-five and just have a PD that would apply to any zoning district. It would not be a zoning district of itself. But I put the formal, what will be in the ordinance part, which you read at the beginning, in that, because, yeah, like I said, it'll take any reference to R-five out, and then will become what, creating section eleven under article five of the current zoning code. So, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All right. Don McBride?
Yes.
Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Okay, four oh.
Your next item is PC application two zero dash zero zero six, discussion and review on an amendment to the City of Guthrie Code of Ordinances, amending chapter sixteen, planning and zoning, article two, zoning, section sixteen fifteen, adoption by reference, by amending and updating all articles of the City of Guthrie zoning code. The amendment will also repeal the existing mobile home and recreation vehicle parks, signs and outings, landscaping and telecommunications facilities regulations in their entirety, and will update and incorporate all requirements within the updated zoning code. Staff report.
Okay. I, I had kind of already, I guess, had this in my head. Given the items that were going to be here tonight, I had already thought that I would give the planning commission the option to ma, basically just table this discussion for tonight, because I'm looking to have a special meeting next Thursday, April, or August twentieth, and at that meeting, we can get through the rest of the code, I think, have some discussion on different items that's needed, and then have a follow-up meeting where there would be the actual formal recommendation. So, if you, if the planning commission desires, given the hour, we can go ahead and wait and just continue this at a special meeting on next Wednesday, or I mean, next Thursday, August twentieth. Or I can go over some elements tonight. It's up to you.
If, if it's certain we'll have a quorum, do we need a quorum for that kind of, I mean, we'd want more, enough of us there anyway?
Yeah, yeah, well, and that's the other thing, because Chris has gotten back with me, but would the rest of the commission be available next Thursday?
I would be.
Okay.
I should be.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so we would have a quorum, so, in that, or a majority, so.
Let's, let's wait.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and it's, well, that's the thing. Since it's, it, since it is a discussion item, yeah.
It started at five with a-
Yeah, and it's already seven thirty, and you-
It was a long time.
Yeah, and of course, you know me, I like to talk. So, anyway, we don't necessarily need a motion, because it's a discussion item anyway, so as long as the commission's fine, we'll just, like I said, essentially just wait, and we'll continue this next Thursday at a special meeting. So, now we can move on to, well, staff comments, and staff has no comments.
Any commission comments?
I gotta go back to work.
For, for those watching at home, and, you know, this is a difficult job, and I'm, appreciate that we take the time to listen to all the concerns and really weigh the, the pros and cons, and, you know, I hope, yeah.
It's not like you're coming with your mind made up.
Right, no, and I, I mean, I think all of us, we take time to read and research, and-
Some of them makes it pretty hard.
Yeah.
They make it hard on you.
Yeah, so, so that, that's all I have to say, is just that, I hope everyone can appreciate the deliberation, and it seems like the council has an easier time making decisions than we do, for better or worse.
There's a reason behind that, I'll tell you later.
So, any further comments? All right, and with that, we're adjourned.